President.
Ms. Chenoweth.
Present.
Mr. Hayes.
Present.
Ms. Pat.
Present.
Mr. Roberts.
Present.
Mr. Whelan.
Ms. Weinman.
Present.
Mayor Satterthwaite.
Mr. Whelan is in the hall.
Are there any additions to the agenda? Do you have any staff reports?
Mr. Hayes, on your desk, there is a packet of information. It's related to a development agreement that we have with Fox Development Corporation and Provena Hospital. It came to our attention today that there was a sale of this property pending between Fox, Provena, and a new purchaser. And in our development agreement that we passed with Provena and Fox, the standard boilerplate that we have, which is on the back page of this, requires that the parties submit to the city council a consent at which we approve or not approve for the sale, and such consent will not be unreasonably withheld or delayed by the city. I think this was something that we discovered today, that the sale is pending, closing next week. I'm, it's my intent to go ahead and list this on next week's council agenda, even though it's not on our agenda tonight, this is just information. It will not have gone through the normal committee process. On the other hand, our preliminary review of this looks like a standard transaction, and that we really don't have any issues with it. So I'm just going to go ahead and put it on the agenda for the, for this council on May 2nd, and we will proceed in that manner. If there's any questions about it, I'll answer them as best I can during the week I'm available. Also provided some information in the documents that we need to sign to allow this transfer to take place. So I just received these today. It's a short notice, but we do have the right to approve this deal. So that's all I have to report.
Ms. Alex.
Just as a point of procedure, is that appropriate to bring this to council, or do we need to add this to the agenda tonight and forward it to council?
We can't vote on it tonight if we added it to tonight's agenda because it wasn't part of the public notice of the meeting.
I believe you're correct.
Okay, that's fine.
That's why I was doing it under reports.
That's fine.
Okay.
Thank you.
That's all I have, Mr. Hayes.
Ms. Wein.
Which property is this referring to, or is the pending sale?
This is the medical office building that's located immediately south of the Provena Hospital complex on University Avenue. It was constructed, it was a joint venture between Provena and Fox Development Corporation, and it's being transferred.
And do you know if the sale or the proposed property, the purchaser, is for profit or not for profit?
I believe it's for profit.
Okay. And you'll know for sure before we vote on that?
Yes.
Okay.
You're asking if it's taxable?
Right.
Yeah, we also have, our agreement also requires that it's either taxable or payment lower taxes.
Okay.
So we're protected.
Thank you.
No other staff report? We have the approval of the minutes from previous meeting?
Move approval.
Second.
Moving second of the minutes from the previous meeting. Be accepted? Any corrections? Not in all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both? Seeing none? Minutes approved. Before we move further, we have a proclamation to read. Here's Barb Linder in the audience.
A proclamation by the mayor of the city of Urbana, Illinois. Whereas television sets are on an average of more than seven hours per day in U.S. homes. And whereas children use television more than any other medium. And whereas over 1,000 studies have connected televised violence with aggressive behavior in children. And whereas 56 percent of children ages eight through 16 have a TV set in their bedroom. And whereas children view over 40,000 commercials on television annually. And whereas television promotes overconsumption. And whereas television viewing is linked to childhood obesity. And whereas television content perpetuates gender, racial, and ethnic stereotypes. And whereas television programs and ads promote unhealthy attitudes about sex, drugs, and alcohol. And whereas watching television 10 or more hours per week is negatively related to academic achievement. Now therefore, I toss Satterthwaite, mayor of the city of Urbana, to hereby proclaim April 25 through May 1, 2005, to be TV Turnoff Week, and urge our citizens, businesses, and families to support the health and media literacy of children, youth, and families in Urbana by turning off all televisions for the week. In witness thereof, I head to set my hand and cause the seal of the city of Urbana to be affixed this 25th day of April in the year of our Lord, 2005. Tom Satterthwaite, mayor.
Barb Linder, do you want to receive this proclamation?
Thank you.
Could I say a few words?
Sure.
Please. We want to thank the mayor and the council for this proclamation. This is actually National TV Turnoff Week. This is the 11th consecutive year that there's been a National TV Turnoff Week. This is the first for Urbana. I hope it's not the last that we do TV Turnoff Week in conjunction with the National Week. You heard all the reasons, and I hope that after people listening at home have listened to this council meeting, that they will all turn off their televisions. After the meeting. I just, we just came from Urbana Middle School. Our students at the middle school spent last week with media literacy lessons. The first lesson on Monday was a lesson in which they logged their viewing, and they were actually to log it all week. I talked to a sixth grade teacher, and she said it was very interesting when the students came into the classroom on Tuesday, and they were sharing their logs and comparing the who had what kind of rules at home with their television. And as they did their graphing on how many hours of television were watched, the kids themselves looked around the room and noted, "The kids that get good grades don't watch very much TV." What an interesting way for students to learn. With us tonight is a sixth grade student, and her mother Lori Patterson. And Lori and her family have their own story to share with you tonight as an example of what can happen if we do take control as parents of the Mote.
Thank you. Yeah, my name's Lori Patterson. I'm here with my daughter Maya Patterson, who's in sixth grade at Urbana Middle School. And Barb approached me a couple of months ago and just asked if I would be interested in helping in some manner with TV Turnoff Week. I don't know if she knew she was going to get such a passionate, willing participant because it turns out that two years ago, the school that my children were attending also participated in TV Turnoff Week. And I thought, there's just no way we could do anything like that in our household because my, my family, both sides, my side as well as my husband's side, were quite used to having the TV on. In fact, my husband comes from a family where, once they buy the TV and they turn on the TV, the on-off switch doesn't matter anymore. It just stays on. So we brought TV Turnoff Week into our house two years ago, and it made such a significant difference in our, in our household, and it stayed with us. So actually, this, this year, the kids, the husband's kicking and screaming a little bit more than the kids, but, but the amount of TV that we, that we watch now is far less. I was asking Maya on the way over here if she thinks that TV Turnoff Week is significant. And she said, yes, definitely. It means that you spend more time with your family. So I sincerely thank Barb for the work that she's done, and I really appreciate the city of Urbana taking this stance. It's, it's made such a difference in our lives, and I hope to be surrounded by more citizens who take it seriously.
Thank you.
We did bring a small gift for you. I know you've been all admiring my wristband, but if you turned off the lights, would see the glows in the dark. It says, "Go play," and it has the TV logo on both sides. We brought it up for everyone.
Now we come to that part on the agenda for public input. If there's ever anyone in the audience who would like to speak before the council, for no longer than five minutes is slipped back and back to fill out, and we will grant you that opportunity.
My name is Robert Michael Doyle, and I live in Champaign, and I just wanted to repeat remarks that I made to you earlier in the year in support of the Domestic Partner Registry. And that, and I'm pleased to see that the intent is to have it open to all residents, whether they live in Urbana or not. And it will be interesting to see how it is used, but I know there are a number of people in this town in same-sex relationships, some of whom have various kinds of legally-recognized marriages and civil unions from elsewhere. And so I, Urbana should be proud to have been the first city in Illinois to have prohibitive discrimination on the basis of sexual orientation, and so I'm happy to see you're taking this step to recognize the gay community in another way. And that's all I wanted to say, because I gave most of my arguments to all of you earlier, and I don't want to take up your time by repeating them. Thank you.
Any questions for Mr. Doyle? Thank you very much, Mr. Doyle. Any input from council members?
Regarding what?
Anything.
Like in general, things not only tell.
Well, dare I speak? I have to resign as of the 30th, so I won't be an official part of the council next Monday. But I will be here, and just want to tell you folks that despite our disagreements, and there have been substantial and many, I do value your intentions and your goodwill, and I see a lot of good coming from it, generosity. And I mean that sincerely. I'm just, we just disagree on certain things, and in a professional collegiate capacity like this, you don't just hate somebody because you disagree with them. So I just wanted to say that.
Thank you very much, Mr. Whelan.
Thank you for your service, Joe.
We appreciate it.
Any other council persons? We now, at this time, have the pleasure of being led in a discussion by our own Danielle Chenoweth on the discussion Domestic Partner Registry. Ms. Chenoweth.
Thank you. Thank you, Chairperson Hayes. What you have before you today, I just want to walk people through the documents and a little bit of the history. In January, the council voted to support a motion that directed the city clerk to prepare a plan for domestic partnership registry, and we gave some stipulations to that at that time. Last week, after, after much work and research reviewing the domestic partner registries of dozens of cities throughout the United States and the, and the state of California, as well as looking at what the requirements for marriage were in our own county, Ms. Clark and myself put together kind of our first pass at what a domestic partner registry could look like. I passed that out in the form of a frequently asked questions. So you received that last Monday. Between last Monday and now, thanks to Ms. Shannon and Mr. Walden, who have been working tirelessly on this, and even while I was away, we were in frequent communication, they helped to draft, to provide input to the affidavit, which I distributed last week, which was a sample affidavit, as well as the, Mr. Walden was instrumental in helping to draft the language of the ordinance that's before you today. So what you have before you is language of an ordinance, which refers to an affidavit, the sample affidavit, and then, just to clarify, there's two documents that are not part of the ordinance. They are for our reference, for references only. This is the marriage application off of the county clerk's website, and also information about obtaining a marriage license, also from the county clerk's website. So the point in providing these two pieces of documentation is to show you what it takes to get a marriage license, which, which ain't much, actually. So it's important to have that as a reference point. Let me try to draw your eye to some of the changes between the documentation you received last week and this week. I believe in, if you look at the affidavit, which is kind of the most important piece of the documentation, one thing is that we added the word indefinitely. So we're basically the undersigned declare that we're engaged in a committed relationship and intend to remain together indefinitely. I think the city's language was permanently. We went back and forth since so few partnerships, married or unmarried or permanent, that indefinitely was more appropriate. Went back and forth on the issue of 18 years of age because, actually, you can get married at the age of 16 with parent's approval, because so many of the registries throughout the United States use the 18 years of age, and because our own city did, we left it at that. But I do make a note that that's not exactly the same as the, as the marriage contract. We, I sent this out to a number of people in the community, both constituents and people associated with gay and lesbian organizations. I received excellent, excellent feedback from people. Some things that they brought up, on number six, it says, "Neither of us is in a marriage recognized in the state of Illinois." I think before it said, "Both of us certify that we're unmarried," but it is the case that some people have been married in Massachusetts, Canada, and other countries. And so it's okay for people to be married in those states. It's just not okay for them to be registered as domestic partners if their marriage is recognized in the state of Illinois. In fact, if the marriage does become recognized in the state of Illinois, then probably this domestic partner registry would dissolve, which, in my personal opinion, would be the hope for the future. Other things that were added to, one of the things that I think is important distinction that, that folks should understand is that the goal here is for this to be both symbolic, meaning providing public recognition of, of relationships, in particular with same-sex couples. That's something that's been denied them for thousands of years. The, but the other goal is for employers to take the registry and use it as a service to them. It's very expensive to maintain the administration behind, behind health benefits, period, and adding this as one more layer of administration can be cumbersome, especially to small employers. So the goal is to have some kind of program where employers, where the, the stipulations in the program would be such that employers would want to use it. So in that way, it was suggested to me, both by some constituents as well as, as well as Mr. Walden, that we make it clear that, that this is a contract, and that this is a binding contract and under penalty of perjury, under the laws of the state of Illinois. The partners declare that the above statements are true. So that's new information. We've also stated in here, because the healthcare providers and employers may have a moving target in terms of what they consider eligible domestic partners, and we don't want to have a registry that continues to change because, once people are registered, they may be registered for life, and we don't want the terms of what they're registered for to change under their feet. The goal of the program is to provide the basic foundation for the registry of domestic partners. And then if employers would like to add additional stipulations, so for example, our registry is for same-sex and heterosexual partners. The, the University of Illinois provides domestic partner benefits only to same-sex couples. So that would be an additional stipulation that an employer could add on top of what exists here. So the, the idea is that we provide a foundation, and employers can say, "Well, you need to be registered with the registry, plus you need to have lived together for six months," or whatever it may be. There was a, one thing that was deleted, I'll call your attention to, was a section that says, you have to, basically, it's a waiting period, you can't be registered. Once you've broken up and terminated your registry, it's a six-month waiting period. I heard back from folks that that, that isn't similar to the marriage license, and that perhaps we should exclude that, and then if an employer like the city of Urbana would like to add that as an additional stipulation, it could. And that actually, different employers might have different periods of time in which they would want people to be registered, not have been registered with another domestic partner. So some employers may choose that to be three months. I think the city of Urbana says it's six months. Some employers may wish a year. So that would be up to them. So that has been deleted from the affidavit. I think that that pretty much covers the changes to the affidavit, and the ordinance essentially outlines that. It outlines what has been passed beforehand. It's a three-page ordinance. I'm not sure if it's beneficial to, for me to read it out loud. It's been on your desk. Maybe we'll take questions, and then if I need to refer to a particular part of the ordinance, I can, I can read that part of the ordinance.
Do we have any questions for Ms. Chenoweth? Ms. Wein.
Is the intent for this to go into effect upon final passage by council?
The, if you go to page three of the ordinance, section three, the ordinance states that section one of this ordinance shall become effectively, effective immediately upon its passage and approval. Section one of the ordinance says, "The mayor and city clerk are hereby authorized to take the actions necessary, including spending of funds from the '04-'05 city budget, to establish the domestic partner registry described herein." So that would happen, basically, that they could start moving ahead to establish the registry. Section two, which actually opens the registry up for the public to use, shall be, that ordinance, it shall become effective at a date to be established by mutual agreement between the mayor and city clerk, but no later than September 1st of this year. So, and then the effective date of the registry shall be publicly announced by the mayor and recorded by the city clerk, and I would assume that would be our new mayor. In fact, we have the new mayor listed as the person who would be signing this, simply because of the transition.
Ms. Pat, I mean, did you finish, Ms. Wein?
I have a few more questions. So I'm just wondering, is it, you, you say that you've got Laurel, just, we have to correct the spelling of her first name before we do that, but is it kosher for the current council to pass it, and then for the next mayor to sign it? Is that?
I have a question before the, before the city attorney on that issue. And he was unable to respond to that question today, so this week we'll know the answer to that.
And then, just a question on who can, who can sign up on the registry? What is the nexus or the connection that has to occur with the people who can sign up? Do you have, in different cities and communities have done it differently. So one could require, at least one person in the, in the partnership has to be a resident of the city of Urbana, or work in the city of Urbana, or have visited, you know, we could have different requirements, as tenuous as, you know, not, well, some sort of vague requirement of, I'm not sure even what connection you have to have to Urbana, or that you live, work, visit Urbana. I think, is it, one of the communities in Holly, or in California, I think the first community that, that passed domestic partner registries doesn't even require that you have any connection to that community at all, but that you, that you can just sign up as a domestic partner, or sign, both people can sign up as domestic partners despite the lack of any connection to that community. So I'm just wondering what, what requirements there are for that.
Currently, the way it's written is that it, there are no requirements. So, so folks who live in Mexico could come and register as domestic partners here. They do have to appear in person.
Okay.
That's the only requirement. Folks who live in Rantoul, yeah, I, I expect that people from the surrounding areas would participate in this, simply because they don't have an outlet, particularly same-sex couples, but also heterosexual couples who choose not to get married don't have outlets in which to have public recognition of their relationship. So I would expect the couples, partners throughout would come and participate in this. So as we have said before, there is, is no citizenship requirement, no residency requirement, no employment in Urbana requirement, only that you show up in person. So it's not actually stipulated here because it's, because we've listed what the requirements are, and those are things that aren't required. Now, I have suggested to the clerk through the frequently asked questions that we stipulate clearly that there are not those requirements, so that that's clear, you know, on the website or whoever's coming to find out more about the registry, because that will probably be a question.
Okay. And one final question on the affidavit. Both domestic partners have to appear personally, and that's why there's only one notarization space?
That's correct.
Is that right? Okay.
They have to appear in person with, with proof of age and identity.
Okay. Thank you.
Ms. Pat.
Thank you. I ask this only because of the language of section one. The statement, including spending funds from the 2004-'05 city budget, leads me to question whether we need a budget amendment. I don't know how much money is involved in, in this. I mean, I would think it's not a lot, but how much money are we talking about, and, and is there going to be a budget amendment that comes with this?
I would refer that to Mr. Walden.
Well, my instant reaction is that we probably don't need one. There's probably enough money in line items that we, I mean, these costs are relatively minimal. I haven't seen a firm estimate, but I really don't think we'll need one.
I believe we're just purchasing certificates.
And I think that that's probably, given this, well, based on what I know today, I don't think we do. I think we can figure it out without the budget amendment.
Is there any reason this language is in here, then? Because we often pass ordinances that might involve some money that's already in the budget. It usually doesn't have that, that language. Is there any particular reason?
I think it was only to sequence the timing of.
The original motion was that the costs had to cover, the, the cost from the fees had to cover the registry. And so this is just an attempt to say that, obviously, we won't collect the fees until after we've established it. There may be, you know, alternative wording, but that's, that's the idea.
That makes sense. And I support this. I mean, either way, I was just curious if we needed to do more. Thank you.
And I had to ask via email about a number nine and 10, which were on the original drawn-up affidavit. I guess I, maybe I'd just like to have some clarification about why we would need to really discuss as a, as an establishing of our own registry, possible additional requirements that other entities or companies or businesses may have in documenting this relationship, when my understanding is that this registry is indeed. understanding is that this registry is indeed giving a certificate of registration, which is exactly what is the documentation of a relationship. I didn't quite understand why we would be concerned ourselves with other possible requirements from other entities in our own document.
To respond to that, the, and I got your email, and I think the issue, the reason for number nine is to make sure that we don't mislead people. Because what's tricky, actually, it's a, it's a common misperception, that people who, people think that civil unions, for example, are the same thing as marriage. Marriage is, conveys several thousand rights. Civil unions at most convey 300 rights, I think, in the broadest sense. So there's already a misunderstanding when we use these different terms, marriage and civil unions. In this case, the goal is to make sure that people are not misled into thinking that registering for domestic partner, as domestic partners with the city of Urbana, you know, automatically conveys benefits with your employer, or that, that what your, if you know that your employer provides domestic partner benefits, registering with the city of Urbana may not be enough. There may be additional things that employers need to, need to see in terms of whether it be documentation of the relationship. For example, if your employer uses Health Alliance as a way to provide health insurance to your domestic partner, they want to know that you are responsible for each other's medical bills. That may require a certain kind of documentation that is not being required here with this registry. So that's simply just to avoid misunderstanding.
So you believe that, that that wording is actually useful?
Yes.
And should be in the document?
Yes.
Any other questions? Ms. Alex?
I guess I would raise a similar concern to what Mr. Roberts raised. I would actually, if I were crafting this legislation, probably omit item nine and everything in item 10, following the word, or including and following the word "and," for essentially the same reason. In other words, I think that by getting into the discussion of employers and employer benefits, we may be conveying the impression that, that we have something to say about that, or that we have an opinion as to the validity of this registry.
Or that we condone it.
With regard to some particular employer or employer-employee relationship. I think comments to that effect, that, you know, this, participating in such a registry does not necessarily imply the availability of benefits from your employer, or that your employer may require additional documentation, would be something that would be very appropriate in any type of supporting documentation that we provided with the domestic partnership certificate, which is my impression, based on the ordinance, that such documentation would be included. In other words, information on employers that recognize domestic partnerships and on legal protections that are available and so forth. And I would, I would say that I think that would probably be a more appropriate vehicle in which to convey this type of disclaimer than in the affidavit. It's, it's not sufficient reason for me to support or not support it, but I would think that might be something we'd want to consider, because this jumped out at me as well, that all the other criteria here are related to essentially establishing that one meets the definition of what we believe constitutes a domestic partnership, except for in these two provisions, we're getting into the notion of benefits and what this may or may not mean to an employer, and that seems to be somewhat out of place in this, this general document. Are we, there's not an intention to vote on this, right? This is just a discussion?
Our goal, my request actually is to make a motion to send this to counsel next week with the recommendation for approval. So, so yes, it's, I wanted to have open discussion, take some, take some information in, and then provide a motion. We don't have a motion on the table at the moment.
I will withhold any further comments then until there's a, until when and if there's a motion.
Okay.
Any other comments? Ms. Wyman?
Just adding to that on number 10, where discusses, make us liable to civil action by employers, I wonder if we should, if that sentence is going to be left in to just then take out the words "by employers," as there's been discussion regarding the zoning issue, and would people try to claim a domestic partnership to get around the current zoning laws? And so if you then leave out employers, that just, it doesn't limit that liability.
To just take out "by employers."
Thank you.
Ms. Chenoweth?
Just a question for Mr. Alex. The, in nine and 10, the, in some ways, what you're saying makes sense in that this is an affidavit, you're declaring a certain set of things, maybe declaring that you understand something to be the case is not really the same thing as declaring that you're 18 years of age, or that you're competent to sign a contract. The, one thing that's difficult in this is we don't necessarily have a feedback loop with employers. I think in some ways, the, what will, we will see how employers use this, and the goal is to set up something as best we can, such that employers would feel comfortable using this as, as a document, as part of the documentation that they use to provide benefits. So, and it's my intention that it may be used in that way. So in doing this, I think the nine and 10, in some ways, speaks more to the employers who are looking at whether or not they're going to use the registry than it does to the people who are registering. And maybe that's the issue. My question to you is, you said you're worried about, I'm trying to understand your concern. You're worried about the implication of what number nine means, but what is that implication that you're worried about conveying?
I guess the implication I'm most concerned about, irrespective of the fact that we're specifically talking about benefits to the city of Urbana, or benefits to employers of the city of Urbana, which I think is another issue, is that we are essentially implying that the primary or a significant purpose of this is to, that provide documentation for the purpose of employer benefits. And although I think that's an important, that is an important part of the reason why someone would want to register, it's perhaps, from a standpoint of a city ordinance, not the only reason or the primary reason. And I think, to some extent, if you are seeking to provide a registry that in effect legitimizes domestic partnerships in a way that other employers or the city for the purpose of enforcing ordinances or other entities can determine domestic partnership, to some extent, I think since you've been looking at, at marriage requirements as a, as a model, you might want to look at that here. I mean, to get a marriage license, you aren't required to affirm that you understand that just because you're married, you might not be entitled to employer benefits. And it's just something that seems out of place in the context of an, of a, an affidavit that is basically otherwise only intended to determine whether or not you meet the criteria to be a domestic partner. And I think, to some extent, basically by saying, you know, "We can't guarantee that you are going to get these benefits," we're almost implying that we are somehow interested in or involving ourselves in the process of whether or not you, you obtain benefits. It just seems like an inappropriate place to include that discussion. I'm not sure if you're asking from, when you're talking about implication, if you're asking, you know, "Am I worried that we're, the city is somehow opening themselves to some particular class of liability?" The answer would be no, but I think it's just a case that if we're trying to do what, if I understand correctly, the intent of this is, which is to provide a, a general recognition of domestic partnerships, that being as specific as we are here in requiring people to say, "Well, okay, yes, we're domestic, we've met the standard to prove that we're domestic partners, but yeah, we understand this doesn't really mean what we think it might mean." It's probably, to some extent, maybe a negative in terms of conveying a strong message of support for this type of, of a recognition.
Mr. Roberts?
Well, that was my concern also. The domestic partner affidavit is basically a tool for which people living together and wishing to announce that status to the world, to establish themselves in some kind of like officially recognized relationship, is the main purpose of this document. And I feel a little uncomfortable that by discussing specific, possible, further requirements that we recognize some employees, or employers, or other agencies outside of ourselves may have, actually dilutes the power of our own document, I feel. I think it's up, I think that the city should take a strong stand to say that we believe in domestic partnerships and we support them. And then if other agencies or whatever have qualms about them and want further justification before they'll allow a benefit, that is, I don't think that the city should pander to that opinion. I think that the city should rise above it, and perhaps there'd be a time in the future where that business would have to discuss something with the legal counsel of the city, determine whether they're accepting a domestic partnership, you know, on face value or something. So, I mean, I'm glad that Councilman Alex kind of agreed on, that nine and 10 were somewhat problematic. And I actually had rewritten that and forwarded it to you, but I didn't bring a copy with me, so I can't refer to it.
I used 10 verbatim from your email.
Did you? Okay. Well, maybe I could have said something somewhat better than that, then. Anyway, I bring this up, and maybe I even was not clear enough about the intent, but I think it needs to be looked at, and I think, you know, we're under discussion right now. What's, what's the strongest thing that we can do for this document without somehow diluting it? And I'm just considering that if we don't have to say something or go into an issue, let's not do it.
Ms. Wyman?
Recognizing that the city, in its requirements for an affidavit of domestic partnership for employee benefits, does not disclose, and is, does not disclose these affidavits or the names of those individuals, and that information is kept private, I'm wondering if we should add something to the affidavit that clearly discloses to those signing the domestic partner affidavit, that, that this information is not, or it's, that this information is subject to the open meetings, or, sorry, not open meetings, but Freedom of Information Act, or that it, that it's not, not found at least to be a, an exception to, to the FOIA requirements, unless staff has found otherwise. I just worry that people who sign it and think that it's private or somehow not going to be disclosed, might be surprised if, if they see it published somewhere. And I don't know if staff has comments on that.
Ms. Betts?
Yeah, that might, I mean, that might be something in the information packet. I don't know if it needs to be in the affidavit. And I'm not sure if you would even need a FOIA request if this is going to be public information.
Right.
I mean, we don't, we don't decide if it's eligible under the FOIA. That's for others to determine. Either it is or it isn't. We can't control that, so.
But if there's something, then, and it would be, I guess it doesn't have to be in the affidavit, but something so that people aren't under the mistaken impression that unlike with their employer, employer affidavits that they have to, that they sign that are kept private, that they're not under an assumption that, that this is a similar circumstance where it definitely is kept private.
I think what Mona's suggestion was, that to the extent that you actually take these provisions out, they could go into the ordinance as something directing the clerk to put it in a packet, or provide that information and information on the Freedom of Information Act as a part of the packet, not in the affidavit. Of course, we have our own requirements as an employer that we, so we can handle that separately by our own affidavit and policy.
Right.
But for the purposes of other employers, if, if the direction is you're going to take some of this out, you could, Mona's suggestion was, well, we could put it in the ordinance. Much of this ordinance directs the clerk to do various things. It could say, "Also in the packet, provide information for this and for this."
Yeah. I, I would be happy with either one of those, just as, I think you said, Mr. Walden, we obviously don't want to claim that something is or is not exempt from the Freedom of Information Act, as, you know, the law and the interpretation of that law changes frequently. But something just so it's clear that it's not automatically exempt or automatically kept private. Thank you.
Ms. Alex?
I'm concerned we're going down the wrong path here, talking about Freedom of Information Act requests. I mean, it was my intention that this was to be a public registry, that in effect, this information was to be, if not actively published, at least certainly made actively available to potential employers, potential people with whom one might be doing business or, or otherwise conducting itself in a manner that you would gain a benefit from being identified as a domestic partner. I mean, and I guess this is a question for Ms. Chenoweth. Is that, is that your impression as well? I wasn't aware that this was to be a, you know, secret list somewhere in the city clerk's office, but in fact, this would be, as most public declarations are, something that would be a matter of public record.
Yes. It would be, it would be public information. I would advise against publishing a list on the web for, because we still live in a world that's discriminatory and full of hate crimes. But in terms of it being public information, I think if someone wants to come and ask the city clerk, "Is this person registered as a domestic partner?", it should be public information that's available.
I think, I guess based on the confusion that we're seeing at the council level, it probably would be appropriate to incorporate a provision in the affidavit that acknowledged that this was, it was the intent of the affirmees, the affirmants, that this be a matter of public record, and then furthermore, to indicate in the ordinance, the means in which access was to be provided to the registry, which I would hope would be, although perhaps, as I said, as you say, might not have to be actively published. I mean, if one comes to the city clerk's office and says, you know, "Let me see the list," or "Show me who's registered," I would think that that would be something that would be what we want. So perhaps we should look at modifying the ordinance to include direction to the city clerk on, on how to provide access to the documentation.
Mr. Whelan?
I think that the conversation has gone too far. We're crafting legislation on the floor. I think this, and I think that, and wouldn't it be nice if we did this, and wouldn't it be safer if we did that? And it's, it's not the way to draft legislation. It generally takes some thoughtfulness from staff, and we're not, we can't anticipate all the potential problems that this might lead to. Aristotle once wrote in his The Comikian Ethics, that everything we do, we do for a good reason. There is some element of good, no matter what it is. Murder might be to save yourself from something or other, I don't know. But I mean, that's what he said. And I believe that, that there is some good in everything we try to do. And I, I mentioned that earlier, because I see in this council generosity, thoughtfulness, willingness to break new ground and to secure the city for the betterment of the citizens. But this particular thing is a joke. It's truly a joke. Domestic partner. What the devil is a domestic partner? I mean, either, it's either that you're homosexual, or you're living together without the bonds of marriage, or you could be just brothers and sisters, or you could be cousins. I mean, it, there is no definite thing to say that this is going to cover any one group of people. But it is a euphemism, and it's a weak term, domestic partner. When you compare it to the, the marriage bond, the bond that secures families, that provides for hopefully childbirth and population development, this domestic partner concept is, I don't know, I can't compare it to anything else. Trying to think in terms of some other situation where you might just call people something else, like, "He's a fair-minded guy, but he doesn't like this race." I mean, it's, it's like, it's, it's totally useless, domestic partner. Now, the benefits that might come from this do have some merit, the, the health benefits and some of the others. And I think perhaps that could be crafted without legitimizing any of these other relationships. And I don't know how to do that. The thing that makes this a joke to me, more so than anything, is this termination. Jeez. It reminds me of some states in the Middle East where a man just has to It reminds me of some states in the Middle East where a man just has to send a postcard and discard his wife. I, the undersigned, declare that, hey, Bob, Jack, and Jim, or Mary, and I have ended our domestic relationship, partnership on such and such a date, and that's it. Just one person has to, has to say that. It's a joke. This is, and it shows that this is not any kind of a real commitment that we're talking about. It is committed friends and partners and have a, oh, a kind of value that truly a marriage might have. In that day, people can live together and support each other and help each other. And there's, there's some kind of a respectful aspect to that. But there's one other thing that bothers me, and it's that, and we're all doing it here, and, not me, but you're sitting around here talking, well, suppose item nine shouldn't be in there, or how about item 10, or what about the liability, or what about, so many aspects of it that we can't fathom at this point in time. The other thing that's most important to me is tell the government to stay out of our bedrooms. It has no right, no reason, no, no privilege in our bedrooms to legitimize or dislegitimize the relationship between two people. And so I think for those reasons, the fact that it diminishes the value of marriage, cornerstone, a pillar of our society that strengthens our society, and that it, it is, allows for, and speaks highly of the government getting into our bedrooms, is, to me, a sham. And I can, I oppose it wholeheartedly and with the deepest part of my soul. Thank you.
Ms. Bet.
Thank you. I think that all of the concerns expressed by Mr. Whalen could be best addressed if the institution of marriage were open to same-sex couples. But because it is not, people who support the civil rights of all people regardless of their sexual orientation, and people who are concerned about the exclusion of gay men and lesbians from the institution of marriage have sought to recognize domestic partners as a first step toward including all people regardless of sexual orientation in the mainstream of American life, which includes the commitment that two people make to each other to spend their lives together. It's a very small first step. As Ms. Chenoweth mentioned earlier, domestic partnership is, is a far, far cry from marriage, but in establishing this register, we both enable people who want to make a public declaration of their commitment to each other to do so, and provide some assistance to those employers who do choose to extend benefits to people in a committed relationship who are excluded by law from the institution of marriage. I think it's a good thing. I don't really care whether items nine or 10 are on the affidavit or in an instruction sheet. I'll support whatever is the will of everyone else here. And as a minor point, but an important one for new council members, the purpose of committee is to draft legislation. When, when, at times, I've heard people state the objection that, that legis, that we're, we're writing legislation on the floor, that's prior to a final vote to enact an ordinance at a city council meeting, and it's best not to get, make it too complicated at that point because anything that we discuss and decide should get reviewed, and that's why we have committee meetings a week prior to council meetings so that we can have this discussion, make the decisions about what changes we want, and then request the staff appropriately word those changes in an ordinance that we then view the next week at council. So I suggest that, I will actually, I will make a motion to send this ordinance to city council with a recommendation for approval.
Second.
And leave it open to whoever wants to make the motions about items nine, 10, and, and public.
Disclosure.
Disclosure. Thank you.
We had a motion and a second. Ms. Chenoweth.
I'd like to amend the motion to request that the, that the ordinance go through, that it be reviewed by our human relations officer and legal review, and that direction be given to, to the clerk's office and myself to incorporate nine, 10, and the information about the fact that this is a public affidavit into supporting documents.
Is that a friendly amendment?
There could be a friendly amendment.
Yes.
Okay. Second.
Moved and seconded.
I would second it.
Moved and seconded.
Okay.
For friendly amendment, any discussion on the amendment? Mr. Alex.
I find myself in a difficult situation here because I find myself agreeing with many of the fundamental things that Mr. Whalen brought up, but for some reason, those things are encouraging me to support this motion. I wish I could see this as some, you know, high comment on the institution of marriage or some means by which we were bestowing public generosity upon groups of people who have been underprivileged or something to that effect, but I think, to some extent, I see this as, as purely an issue of pragmatism. I think that, to the extent that government involves itself in what goes on in one's bedroom, or I think of more concerning, one's kitchen and living room in this case at all, is the recognition that support that is given from one person to another in the context of a committed relationship is support that ultimately the city or other units of government or the private sector will not have to provide to those individuals. And so by recognizing that there's a benefit to people combining together in households as opposed to acting individually, the government has decided that this is a way that is more likely to result in a society in which people take care of themselves rather than counting on the government to take care of them. And given that, I would say that to the extent that we are in the business of declaring what constitutes a, a household, I think that any two individuals who are willing to band together for mutual benefit, whether they are married or, or members of a same-sex relationship or a large number of other classes of individuals I can think of, are probably, provide equal benefit to the community, and so I would be supportive of this. I think if we want to look at, looks at what leads to requests for this type of a thing, and what leads to employers deciding whether or not to provide benefits to domestic partners, whatever that, that term means, we're in effect acknowledging that there are a lot of stresses going on in society. We're seeing the replacement of the extended family, which has traditionally provided multigenerational support, with the nuclear family. We're seeing the population aging, and we're seeing a period of economic stress where households are finding that they can't no longer get by on a single income. We're seeing, even in the institution of marriage, we're seeing a very high incidence of divorce. We're seeing that resulting in a lot of situations where single moms and single dads are raising children on their own, and we're in a society that's given rise to whole new terms for this. Now, we talk about, you know, not only husbands and wives, but we talk about baby mamas and baby daddies, and, and we are seeing a lot of households that because of personal choice or economic necessity are combining in ways that maybe when the recognition of marriage as a governmental institution as opposed to just a religious institution took place, we weren't necessarily seeing. We see single parents joining together in households to raise their own children, each other's children. We're seeing elderly and their long-term caregivers forming what I think we could call domestic partnerships, relationships of long-term mutual support. And I, if there's one thing I object to in this ordinance, in the preambles to this ordinance, it's the focus on same-sex couples, because I think, quite frankly, it's none of the city's business what goes on in somebody's bedroom. And I think the reason that I am supportive of this is that it doesn't only apply to same-sex couples, that it applies to these, basically any set of two individuals who's will, who are willing to band together for mutual economic benefit, because I feel that, that's something that the city should take an interest in, in seeing happen. And so, you know, I don't see this as a referendum on marriage. I don't see this as a, a, the city formulating any opinion one way or the other on what goes on in anybody's bedroom. I see this as a, the city acknowledging that there's a reason that people should be able to combine in households for mutual support, and that we're acknowledging, if anything, we're acknowledging that that's a good thing, and that we want to make sure that the definition of a household can be as broad as possible. So I'm very much in support of this motion.
Ms. Chenoweth.
This will be my last comment, and I appreciate your support on the motion on the table. Last May, on the 50th anniversary of Brown versus Board of Education, which, which showed this country that separate is not equal, for the, I believe, the first time in Champaign County history, a number of gay and lesbian couples approached the city clerk's office and explained their situation. There was a couple, I believe, who had been together for 18 years, who were taking care of a parent, and they had had multiple children together. There were couples who had children and grandchildren together, who had been together for long periods of years. And they were told at the county clerk's office that you cannot fill out an application for marriage because you, the couple is, is same-sex. At the same time, there were two people who approached the county clerk's office. One was a homosexual male, and the other was a heterosexual female. They were not in love, and they had just met each other the day before. And they explained this to the clerk and said, I'm gay, she's straight, we're not in love, we just met yesterday, can we have a marriage license? And they were given a marriage license, which was, is this long? They filled it out, and they were, uh, application, they filled it out, and they were given a marriage license. So the issue of what is a joke could be questioned based on how easy it is to get married and actually how easy it is to get divorced if both parties are consenting. I have been told in sending this out to a number of people in the community that they're, they're ready and lined up to come to the city clerk's office to register their relationships, that they're thrilled by this, and that after years of having no public acknowledgement of their relationship, and no, in many cases, no way to receive public acknowledgement of those relationships, this will provide that acknowledgement. For the historians out there, this is particularly important because there is no historical record that's public of same-sex relationships, so they've effectively been erased. There are some records in private diaries, et cetera, but no public records. And I think that this is, this is, the history of oppression is the history of erasing one's, erasing the category of human beings' history, and we've seen that with slavery, and we've seen it with, with same-sex relationships. So there are, there is a lot of meaning behind this for me. I don't think that meaning necessarily has to be behind this for all of us who may be supporting this document. For some, you may see this as simply a way to have a definition for domestic partnership. We have the words domestic partnership in our code, and we don't necessarily have a way of showing that. And this, currently, our current code could be considered discriminatory against, especially against domestic partners who are living together because they can't necessarily rent out rooms the way married couples can. So I appreciate your support. I think this is a historic step forward. I think it's one step in many steps. I don't in any way think that this is equality, but I think it's meaningful for a lot of people. It's the right thing to do. We've historically opposed discrimination in many forms. And actually, I, I agree with much of what Mr. Whalen said in that there has been, the state has been involved in deciding who is, has legitimate relationships and who doesn't have legitimate relationships, and I don't think that that is the state's business. But given that, that so many rights and acknowledgements are conferred based on marriage, I think it's important that we at least do what we can in the city of Urbana to both prevent discrimination, which we, we have an ordinance to do so, but to also provide recognition of domestic partnerships. So I appreciate your support and your time with this.
Ms. Whalen.
Speaking in support of the proposed ordinance and, and other paperwork to be sent to council with a recommendation for approval, I think that this ordinance for domestic partner registry clearly falls within our home rule authority to benefit the public health, safety, and welfare of, of the city of Urbana and, and the citizens, the people who come to Urbana. This is a way of, because government already acknowledges and declares what relationships are valid or not valid, I think that it's important that we as a governmental unit can and have the right to assert and show that we recognize relationships and the importance of stable relationships which domestic partnerships and registry as a domestic, as domestic partners recognize. I think it's, it's appropriate, given the feedback that we've gotten, especially from a lot of constituents and other people in the community, that it include both same-sex and different-sex couples. And I, I think that the definition is good. If it is true that this is a not, that this proposal is nonsense, that it, that it is of no use, I suppose we'll see that in the upcoming months, if no partners, no domestic partners register for this. And then I think there won't be a problem. It'll be on the books, but if, if people don't see it as necessary, despite the, the public support for it that we've heard over the last several months, and many of us have heard over the past several years, then it'll go, it won't be in, in active use, and I, I don't see a problem with that. But I think similar, I think based on the, the, the feedback that I've received and that others have, have said they've received, I think we will see this as a very positive step and, and one registration and a city function that, that people all over throughout Urbana and throughout our greater community will see as an asset and will use. And I, and I think this is certainly an important step forward, as Ms. Chenoweth mentioned. By being married and recognized by the state's laws, you, one, one has literally thousands of benefits, many of them tax benefits, healthcare benefits. And this cannot and does not confer any of those benefits on there, but the, the need, the desire to, to be publicly recognized, to publicly declare one's commitment and one's relationship, I think is an important first step that, that we have the power and, we have the power to do and we should do. And to the extent that it also assists employers or other entities in providing for a more equal or a step towards more equal recognition of committed relationships, I think that's important for the city to do as well. Thank you.
Any more discussion before we vote on the amendment? Ms. Roberts.
And I would just like to make a brief comment about the subject of the termination We're allowing the individuals who wish to make a domestic partnership a means by which they can register as a couple or as a partnership, and thereby avail themselves potentially of certain employment or economic parity with the rest of the community. Most partnerships and marriages begin with a simple statement between the two individuals involved and a minister in front of the public. And it's interesting that most marriages dissolve, not in a church, but in a courthouse, and require at least one or two lawyers and many other forms of interaction which have nothing to do at all with the feeling of the institution of their, of their relationship. I think it's appropriate that- I think it's appropriate that this document allows individuals to admit the resolution or the completion of, or termination of a partnership, either through a mutual agreement or by death, and that it be a simple statement, which can be affirmed by signing before, I guess, the registrar or the clerk, without complex additional legal, court-involved, lawyer-involved interaction. And so to speak to how the resolution, the partnership may begin is one part of our discussion, but also to allow the fact that we agree that nothing perhaps does last forever, and that there should be a simple and direct way of terminating that, it seems appropriate, and I think it's, it shows foresight that that'd also be a part of the document, or a packet of availability for the future.
We still on the amendment?
I know it was a friendly amendment, so it's combined on.
No, we're not separate.
No, I accepted, I'm sorry. You heard Ms. Chenoweth's language with regard to items nine and 10? I accepted that as a friendly amendment to the main motion.
So it's actually part of the main motion.
So we only have to vote once.
Mr. Hayes. Ms. Whalen.
Just, not to be combative, but my confere here just said that nothing lasts forever. I just want to tell you, my wife and I have been married for 40 years, and today we're better friends than we were when we first met, and it's a delightful relationship, and I'm sure it'll last until we die, until one of us dies, and so that goes, you know, it just doesn't agree with what you've just said, sir. I still oppose this, and I'm sorry to say that my last meeting here, as an official voter, member of the council, will be a part of this. I hope that someday the people in our city learn what has been going on in the city that they may not agree with, and then perhaps that will change their vote, so that we may elect a body that is perhaps a little more balanced in its decision-making. And that's not to criticize your good intentions, believe me, because I do value all of you, each of you, but I don't agree with you. And I think that in this kind of a situation as in Congress or the state legislature, people need to know who they are electing. And thank you very much for your friendship and your cooperation.
I have one question. Earlier, Ms. Whalen used the term nexus, and that has to do with liability in certain places, and responsibilities we have. And so when we look at that, we look at the relationship that states have with each other, to the extent that if the governor of one state requests action from another state, then they can extradite individuals back to their state. So my question is item number six. Neither of us is in a marriage recognized in the state of Illinois. Now, what kind of a situation would that be? I mean, you know, with the states recognizing each other's relationships, and I just would like to have an idea of what kind of a situation would a person be in a marriage not recognized by the state of Illinois?
There's a couple, I believe it's a gay male couple in the city of Urbana, who went to Massachusetts and were married, and that marriage is not recognized in the state of Illinois. There are also couples who marry in Holland and Canada, and because those couples are in a same-sex relationship, they're not acknowledged. They're not, it's not a recognized marriage in the state of Illinois. So there's not reciprocity in acknowledgement of marriage across state lines for same-sex couples.
Any other questions before we vote? No questions? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Alex?
Yes.
Ms. Chenoweth?
Yes.
Mr. Hayes?
Yes.
Ms. Pratt?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Whalen?
Emphatically, no.
Ms. Whalen?
Yes.
It passes. Your other business before August 4th this evening. I declare a meeting adjourned.